Hey, right here is the boundary. Keep your shirt on.
The October 16th, 2017 City of Andelia Council meeting will now come to order. We will have a moment of reflection followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Would you please stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you've had the opportunity to look over the council study session minutes of October the 2nd and also the council minute, maybe, minutes of October the 2nd. Are there any revisions or corrections? Seeing none, they'll stand approved. We have no communications petitions or awards this evening, nor do we have a public hearing. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if there's someone in the audience who would like to address counsel, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment.
Good evening. I'm Linda Brydenbach. I live at 1154 Park Forest Drive in Vandelia in the neighborhood of Foxborough, so you know why I'm here. First of all, I would like to thank Robert Cron for sending the residents of Foxborough Manor a letter explaining the necessity for the removal of the sign which identifies our neighborhood. He took time out of his busy schedule last, to meet with me last Friday, and I appreciated that also. Safety purposes in the sign's present location are the reasons cited for the decision to remove it. I know this hasn't been an easy decision for city planners. They have heard from both sides on this issue, those who have difficulty making the turn onto Dixie and those of us who would like to maintain our neighborhood identity. I am proposing that the city and interested residents of Foxborough Manor work together to resolve this situation. Certainly those of us who want to maintain our identity do not wish to see anyone involved in an accident at that intersection. After Dixie Drive was widened, the sign was placed back in its present location and the Foxborough residents didn't realize that it was now in the right-of-way. In fact, the right-of-way from Dixie almost extends to the first driveway on the right, which is interesting because when I was here about 30 years ago, I wanted a pathway between Alkaline Springs and Crest Hill because I noticed that the kids, high school kids, were walking on Dixie and it made me nervous. And I thought, my son was three at the time, and I thought, it takes time to get things done, I better start now. So when I brought that before council, and I think Walt Laken was mayor, when G. Jack Davis got involved, he found out that when they took the traction line out between Dayton and Troy, the tracks, they deeded all that property to the residents along Dixie, so there was no easement. And it took about two years, I think, to resolve all of that. So now we've got an easement going to the first driveway up the hill. At any rate, I thought at this point I'd like to give you a brief history of our Foxborough Manor sign. The developer of our neighborhood, Fred Johnson, erected two entry signs which were located about halfway up the hill on Crest Hill. The signs were on what looked to be tall picket fences with a kind of scalloped look to them. At that time, which was during the mid-'60s, they were probably the first signs that identified a Vandelia neighborhood. We moved here in 1971 and found them to be not only very attractive but also quite helpful when we were directing friends to our home. By the mid-'80s or early '90s, as I was thinking about this with Pete, they fell into disrepair and a group of residents gathered, established a neighborhood association, invited interested neighbors to join, and raised the money to erect the necessary, money necessary to erect the new sign, the one that now has a short life. That sign has been maintained, painted, and prior to the widening was the backdrop for summertime flowers thanks to long-term resident Herb Betts. As you can see, we took pride in our sign and more importantly, in our neighborhood. This afternoon, I walked down to Dixie Drive in order to see where a shorter alternative sign could be placed. With a variance, I believe we could find a spot to the right of the lamppost and in line with the gas pipes which are now hidden by the present sign. It would not have to be any higher than those pipes and just a yard or two west of the sidewalk. I do, and it doesn't have to be an elaborate sign, just a pleasant little sign that lets us know we're home in Foxborough. I do hope the city will plant some additional bushes that will hide the gas pipes which will detract from that corner once our sign is removed. Those pipes are not very aesthetic, and I do know Vandelia has been working on appearances in recent years. I look forward to the city of Vandelia working with the residents of Foxborough in order that we might find a solution that is both safe and appealing to both groups. So I thank you for your time, and I do hope you'll consider what I've shared with you. And may I add, the new sound system is great. Thank you.
Thank you so, so very much. Mr. Cruzey, is there, or is there in the works any way in which we can address that situation still be able to maintain some recognition of their community there?
Yeah, I mean, I would think so. I mean, anything that we do that's, you're gonna have that sign in the right-of-way, I think would have to come to council for approval. But I can get with Rob and we can get with the neighbors and see if there's another location. Because the right-of-way goes, I mean, another, what, 100, 150 feet to the west? I mean, there's, maybe not that far.
It does go almost all the way up to the first driveway.
Yeah, yeah, so whether it's taking that existing sign and just moving it further back or putting something smaller out there and then...
Lower, because it does...
Correct.
...your ability to see from the left.
Like I said...
If we have a smaller sign in stature, then that might solve some of our problems.
I said either a smaller sign or just taking the existing sign, moving it further back up the hill a little ways. Well, we can go out and look, we can get with the neighbors and see what might work. And then we'd have to, again, since we're gonna have a sign in the right-of-way, we'd bring that back to council for your approval. And then I think we can, yeah, if we're gonna move the sign away from the gas meter there, we'll put something around it.
Okay, so you will work with them and...
Rob, yeah, I'm sorry.
You all will be working with them and everything and then bring it to us to have a variance.
Correct. Mr. Cron looks like you've got something to say. I apologize.
Do you, Mr. Cron?
If we put something back in front of the gas regulator where the sign is, it's gonna cause the same issue as the sign is.
Well, it wouldn't, whatever we put out there won't be any higher than the existing gas regulator.
But they're really tall.
We won't be able to hide it completely, but we'll put something out there.
Yeah, because they're really tall, that is the problem, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
The gas regulator's tall behind it, it's just piped, it's not solid, it's like a sign.
But we can put something around the base of it.
Can the pipes be changed?
Those are owned by Vector.
Yeah.
Could we put the letters Foxborough on the pipes? Just trying to give you some suggestions of being creative.
We'll work something out.
Okay, fine.
Great.
Yeah, and we knew, of course, when we saw that, and it is a safety hazard, so something does have to be done, but we knew that you would want to have something done to identify your neighborhood, so we'll work on that. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll continue on unless there's somebody else from interested citizens. If not, we will... Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Hi, Mayor Sutser.
Name...
Amy Spencer, 7848 Brown School Road.
Good to have you here.
The address too well-known at this time, but I wanted to say thanks to Mr. McDonald, to Mayor Sutser, to Chief Knight, to Mr. Cruzey for taking action. I appreciate that and thanks. But also just want to mention the previous meeting, I'm hoping that someone will maybe take a look at the conditional use for Miami Valley. I don't expect any comments based on what's going on with the shooting grounds and, as well as environmental issues. And that's really all I have. I just, thank you, appreciate it. Sorry to be in a pain.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Cruzey, I know that you're working on that along with Mr. McDonald, and we really cannot say anything at this time, is that correct?
I cannot, that is correct. I don't know if Mr. McDonald has anything to add.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, now we'll go on to the city manager's report. We have no information items, nor do we have any action items, nor do we have any old business, so that brings us to our first resolution for the evening, and that is 17-R-82. Mr. McDonald.
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Top Shape Enterprises, Inc. for certain golf course bunker renovations in the amount of $39,250.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the bunker renovation and improvement plan, which has been reviewed and approved by the Gulf Advisory Committee, is a three-year project to address all 27 bunkers. Phase one, which we're talking about tonight, involves the reconstruction of five bunkers, again, and the removal of one bunker. So the three golf course construction contractors we're met with to review the scope of this project, three quotes were received, with Top Shape Enterprises submitting the lowest quote.
No?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's all I have.
Is there a motion?
A move that we approve Resolution 17-R-82.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayler, second by Councilman Herbst, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-82 as presented. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. Resolution 17-R-83, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with A&amp;A Safety, Inc. to manufacture and install semi-truck wayfinding signs in the city of Vandelia at the cost of $27,505.50.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So one of the recommendations of the recently completed semi-truck traffic study was to install or purchase and install interstate-sized truck route designation signs to encourage semi-trucks to utilize I-75, I-70, and airport access road rather than US 40 or National Road through town. Additionally, we propose to post signs that would prohibit trucks over 26 feet in length from making right-hand turns from northbound and southbound Dixie onto National Road. As Mr. McDonald said, the cost for this signed package, including installation, is $27,505.50.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 17-R-83 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Fars, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-83 as presented. Any comments?
It's a lot of money for some signs, but they're well badly needed.
Very large signs.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Well, just explaining that this is step two in our action to try to resolve the truck traffic downtown Vandelia. So it's a, it's a big step, I think, and will make, I think it'll make quite an impact, so let's hope for that.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-84, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution declaring various items as surplus and authorizing disposal of such items.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Department directors have compiled a list of items that staff would like council to declare a surplus and grant authorization to dispose of those items. Now, the surplus items would be placed on GOV deals or otherwise disposed of by the city manager as provided by law.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 17-R-84.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-84 as presented. Questions or comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-85, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of a 2018 Ford Transit Connect Passenger XL Van requested by the Parks and Recreation Division to Bo Townsend Ford in the amount of $25,620 and declaring the existing 2007 Ford van as surplus property.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So $25,000 is budgeted for the replacement of a 2007 Ford passenger van that's utilized by the Parks and Recreation Department for program-related activity and other transportation needs. So quotes were requested from three local dealers, with Bo Townsend submitting the loan price of $25,620 for a 2018 Ford Transit Connect XL Passenger Van. A 2017 model is available through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, but their price is $650 more than Bo Townsend's price for a one-year older vehicle.
Okay, is there a motion?
A move that we approve Resolution 17-R-85.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayler, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-85. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-86, Mr. McDonald.
Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Montgomery County Budget Commission has approved the city's property tax rate of 4.14 mils for 2017. The city's inside millage of 1.84 mils is comprised of 1.54 mils for the general fund and 0.3 mils for the police pension fund. Inside millage refers to the 10-mil property tax limitation that can be established without vote or approval. Various taxing units may seek to levy taxes on the same property, but the total amount of unvoted taxes cannot exceed 10 mils. The city's voted outside millage is 2.3 mils, which goes to the general fund.
Thank you, is there a motion?
A move that we approve Resolution 17-R-86 as presented.
It's been moved by Councilman Herbst, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-86. Are there any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-87, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution approving the replat of lots three and four of the crossword, excuse me, crossroads subdivision.
Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Monroe Federal is requesting a replat at 264 East National Road to create one 0.496-acre parcel from two lots. This site has a pending request before council for a major amendment to its planned unit development. The planning commissioner reviewed this plat at its October 10th meeting and voted 4-0 to recommend approval with the condition that a signature line be added for the property owner, and that has been complied with.
Thank you very much, is there a motion?
Your Honor, a move that we pass Resolution 17-R-87 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-87 as presented. Comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-88, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to join a coalition of municipalities retaining special counsel for purposes of initiating litigation to challenge the constitutionality of amendments to Chapter 718 of the Ohio Revice Code relating to municipal income tax.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, so this resolution does authorize the city to participate in litigation, challenge the constitutionality of, and this is regarding House Bill 49 with municipal income tax. Specifically, House Bill 49 authorizes the initiation of centralized collection by the state of Ohio of municipal income tax net profit taxes. The purpose of this litigation is to protect and preserve the city's home rule power of a local self-government and also the protection of income tax revenue in order to maintain and provide municipal services. The cost to the city to participate in this litigation is estimated at $4,000.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 17-R-88 as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakeslee, second by Vice Mayor Lewis, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-88. And I'd just like to make a few comments about this. I do attend several meetings where this is the topic of conversation, and I know for, ever since House Bill 5, we've been trying to do something to get the state legislators to listen to us. And already, because we've had one prior before this, and this is the second one that we are engaging in, and there are a lot of other communities that are also involved with this. Numerous people have gone up to speak to the legislator when the bills have been presented. They have their own way of wanting to listen to us, and so this was the best way, because they are actually tromping on our home rule. And as far as I heard, and I could be wrong, Mr. Cruzey, but at the last point of discussion that we had at my last meeting, it sounds as if they are willing to come back to the table, at least a few of them, to try to negotiate as opposed to going through the court system. Is that what you heard?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so we don't really know, but at least we are out there as a group hoping to protect our home rule.
And what will bring them to the table is us filing litigation.
That's right. That's the last thing we ever want to do, but, and it's a group from all over Ohio, so it isn't just us right down here in Vandelia or just in the north and the southern part of Ohio, because everybody is being affected by these kinds of actions, so, needed to say that, so.
I think there was an article in Sunday's paper about this very issue, and they stated in the paper that there was over 100 cities...
That's right.
...that was involved in this litigation, so it's no small task.
No, and they're cities of all sizes. You have your big cities and you have your smaller cities, and we're considered to be one of the smaller entities, so our cost is not quite as much.
Yeah, and in many cases, what you'll see is that the larger cities will file litigation on their own and won't participate in the group.
Right, but this is a group process.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you so much. You want to call the roll?
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion passes 7-0. We have Resolution 17-R-89, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution establishing a summer meeting schedule for the months of June, July, and August 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. So during the months of June, July, and August, city council would meet once per month. On the third Monday of the month, council's workshop would begin at 6:00 PM, with the council meeting beginning at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Move that we approve Resolution 17-R-89.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ayler, second by Councilman Blakeslee, that we do approve Resolution 17-R-89. And there was a change in that, was there not, because we are going to meet at 6:00 for our workshop as opposed to 6:30?
Correct, in previous years, the others began at 6:30.
Yeah, and I think that we all agree that there, most of the time wasn't enough time, so this will give us plenty of time. Okay. Had the motion. Any other comments besides my own? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. Resolution 17-R-90, Mr. McDonald.
A resolution naming Ball Field 8 at the Vandelia Sports Complex in honor of Hank Owens.
Mr. Cruzey?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Scott Herman submitted to city council a written request to name Field 8 at the Vandelia Sports Complex Hank Owens Field. Per established policy for the naming of a public park, the mayor appointed an ad hoc committee to review Mr. Herman's request. The committee met on September 20th and unanimously recommended to name Field 8 Hank Owens Field. Following receipt of the ad hoc committee's recommendation, council is required to take formal action to either approve or reject the committee's recommendation.
Thank you. I just want to say something here, and this is a City of Andelia Resolution 87-R-15, and it strictly points out that ever, whenever we do get a request to name something for someone, the first thing I have to do is to convene an ad hoc committee. That ad hoc committee, I run it, but I don't say anything during it, and it's the committee members that decide what and how they want to do it. Once that has been accomplished, then it comes back to city council for us to vote on. So I know that there are some people that are thinking that we're just sitting up here saying yay or nay to the naming of something, and that's not the case. So we're taking the recommendation from the ad hoc committee. And in this case, I was very fortunate when I said, oh, who should we have on the ad hoc committee? Because it deals with parks and recs, we just had the Parks and Recs Advisory Committee sit and do this. And I think it's most appropriate because they know everything that's going on out there. I heard some wonderful stories about Hank during his many, many years of service, so it was well worth it. So, do I have a motion?
Your Honor, a move that we approve Resolution 17-R-90 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman, Councilman Herbst, to approve Resolution 17-R-90. Any other comments besides the one I had?
Just other than very deserving. Hank touched many, many lives in this community, and again, well deserved.
I think he was certainly, certainly worthy to honor him in this way. I think anyone with kids certainly appreciated the amount of hours that he puts in up there, put in up there at the sports complex with the baseball and softball. I was up there for years with my kids, and it seemed like the games just went off without a hitch, and whenever there was any problem, he was right there and took care of it.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Aylers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser.
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have an ordinance in its first reading, and that's 17-R-27, Mr. McDonald.
Ordinance 17-27, an ordinance approving a major amendment to the planned unit development for the property located at 175 Northwoods Boulevard and owned by Pilot Travel Centers, LLC in the I District with a PUD overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Flying J is requesting a PUD major amendment to allow the construction of a 31-square guard shack located west of the primary structure at the entrance to the truck parking area. The purpose of the guard shack is to be able to control access to the truck parking area to ensure adequate parking for customers and to enhance security. The proposed guard shack meets all location and setback requirements for an accessory structure in the industrial district. The planning commission reviewed this PUD major amendment at its September 26 meeting and voted 4-0 to recommend approval.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 17-27.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Blakesley, second by Councilman Gerhard, that we do approve Resolutions, or, excuse me, Ordinance 17-27. Other, other comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Everybody's looking at me kind of strange. No problem. This isn't approved in the first reading, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion passes. We have an ordinance in its second reading, and that is 17-25, Mr. McDonald?
Ordinance 17-25, an ordinance approving a major amendment for the property located at 264 East National Road and owned by Monroe Federal Savings and Loan in the downtown business district with the PUD overlay.
Thank you. Since this is a, an ordinance in its second reading, I will open up a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to make comment about this, please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Ordinance 17-25 in its second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilwoman Fars, that we do approve Ordinance 17-25 in its second reading. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Herbst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Sutser?
Yes, and the motion carries 7-0. We have Ordinance 17-26, which is an emergency ordinance, Mr. McDonald?
Ordinance 17-26, an ordinance amending Section 884.10C of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Vandelia concerning penalties for unpaid withholding tax and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Since this is an emergency ordinance, I will open up a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to make comment about this ordinance, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for our records, and then your comment. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Ordinance 17-26 as an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Lewis, second by Councilman Blakesley, that we do approve the emergency ordinance 17-26. Any comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ayler?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gerhard?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbst?